Everyone, I will call our work session to order. We are being held virtually via WebEx of November 10th, 2020. The topic of our work session is organizing curbside residential solid waste, which is trash recycling and organics collection. So I will pass it on to City Manager Rodriguez to open us up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks all this. I don't have a lot more than Rachel and Amy are gonna take you through it. And we've had some work sessions on this before. And so I will ask Amy to take it over. Director Merkel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And for those watching or listening, I'm Amy Merkel, the Recreation Services Director. And then with us tonight presenting is Rachel Lindholm. She's our Sustainability Specialist. And I'm also happy to introduce Peter Santai. He is a Principal Planner with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And he works a lot with the solid waste management and sustainable materials management. So if we find ourselves having questions, we can also ask Peter as well tonight. So I'm gonna ask Sustainability Specialist Lindholm to share our presentation. And in starting to think about organized collection for the city of Richfield, we're gonna be talking tonight why it really makes sense for the community right now and how the process would play out in the timeline associated with it, including engagement and education efforts. And it's nice to know that with organized collection, the adopted plans that our council has in place, which include the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Climate Action Plan, both support this work. When you look at some of the specific goals, like the one noted there, Goal Five of the Climate Action Plan, which is to reduce waste that's generated, it specifically outlines to organize curbside solid waste recycling and organics collection by 2022 and to increase accessibility and equity and achieve environmental benefits. So organized collection is greatly supported by the Climate Action Plan. And both plans really encourage equity for all residents, affordability for residents in the community, sustainable lifestyle, and also an increase of quality of life, which organized collection would help promote and encourage. And so in looking at the why, the purpose for organized collection, the first big reasoning is economic. And when you organize collection, you improve the value of services. You increase equity. You decrease the economic burden on marginalized populations. And that could be communities where English is a second language, senior communities, low or fixed income. We would improve our standardization of services across the whole city. And we would ensure all residents have proper waste management services. So when the city can create a contract with haulers, we can coordinate the services, which would look really the same across the board. And right now, everyone has vastly different services. So we would have the same level of service, increased efficiency. But for residents, it would also result in lower costs. And we would not see the huge variation we see amongst the cost of services right now. And looking at invoices that we received from our organics task force members, the people in the same city with the same hauler getting the same services. We had one member who was paying $20 a month for garbage and recycling. Another member at the same hauler seeing service paying 40 in another part of the city. So there's a huge discrepancy in what people are paying for the same services. But when we're able to help do the negotiation for everybody, I think we will see a decrease in costs and just overall higher quality services for residents. Another huge reason why organized collection makes sense for Richfield are all the environmental benefits. It will reduce the environmental impacts of pollution from increase of trucks, the litter blowing around. It also will decrease the amount of air and noise pollution. It will improve safety for community members. And we'll have decrease of trucks on the road. And for the trucks that are on the road, you know, one hauler will have one area of the city. And so we'll have increased stops. So trucks will be traveling at a lower speed. It will also reduce road wear and impacts with less trucks on the road. And one of the biggest reasons I believe this is so important is we will see a decrease in the amount of illegal dumping in city parks. You know, in working with the park ambassador program this summer, it is not uncommon to see people use city park waste containers as their weekly, you know, place where they put their household trash. We saw just about everything this summer as far as computers in parks, chairs. We found a mattress, lots of different items that, you know, that were just dumped into parks. So hopefully, when everybody has the same level of services that are affordable and equitable, we will see that type of behavior decrease. Another reason why organized hauling really makes sense right now are some of the social and education benefits that would come out of it. It would help minimize disruptions for residents and increase quality of life. We would see increased rates of recycling, composting, and waste reduction. It's interesting to note that we are in the bottom four cities for the rate of recycling in Hennepin County. So we're number 39 of 42. So there's lots of room for improvement. And it's also interesting to note 42 out of 44 cities in Hennepin County have single sort recycling that's organized. And there is definitely some correlation when you have, you know, organized recycling and hopefully organics efforts. You would see an increase in participation and an overall decrease of waste generated that's going into landfills. It also overall would help enhance coordination among government agencies. So it would help us work with our partners from the state such as MPCA, Hennepin County, and also help us reach our own goals that are outlined in the Climate Action Plan. It will improve hauler reporting system and working closer with our haulers. Every year, we are mandated to report out the overall tonnage of waste that's removed from the city recycling and organics. So it would help with the reporting effort. It would also help us increase public education and awareness, having the same system really in place across the whole city, making streamlined education efforts throughout the city. And also just kind of optimize staff and hauler administration efficiencies as well. Just knowing everybody has the same system in place.
In addition to these reasons, I wanted to point out that a lot of these benefits and reasons why have been identified by staff. But just as many have been identified by residents and brought to staff and council members at various points, you know, throughout the past few years, specifically regarding safety. I've had a resident tell me that she won't let her kids play outside in the street or, you know, even probably in their front yard on Thursday mornings until, you know, she knows that all the trucks have gone by and there are so many trucks. So this has really been a priority for a lot of residents for different reasons. Those who want curbside organics collection as it's more convenient than drop off organics and things like that. So I did want to emphasize that this has been a collaboration of identifying the reasons why, you know, staff has looked at why organized collection would benefit the city and as well as why residents would like to see organized collection. So there have been a few. We've done a few work sessions on organized collection and presented, you know, our findings. The staff has presented findings and brought in experts as well. And the recent industry development is that it was announced a little bit ago that one of the haulers that's licensed in the city of Richfield is in process to be acquired by another hauler licensed in the city of Richfield. So Republic is in process to acquire Randy's by the end of the year. This will affect the organizing process as it does decrease the number of haulers involved. So this is just an important update for residents and council members to be aware of as we go through this process. So the organized collection process has a lot of steps to it outlined by the state statute. And I think as we've talked about the reasons why, you know, going forward and looking at what does the statute entail? You know, what are staff responsibilities? Where is the council involved? How are residents involved? How can we make sure everyone's on the same page? As, you know, we learn all of this information and really go through this process together. So I did want to note a few key points in this process. And hopefully that will kind of clarify how the state statute needs to be followed. So there will be a legal notice published this Thursday in the Sun Current that, you know, indicates that the city is pursuing, you know, the option of organizing collection. And that lines up with individual notice that will be sent to licensed collectors in the city. So legal notice will be shared both ways. And that kind of, that starts the process of considering organizing collection. Then there are a few things that can happen simultaneously and are a little flexible. But the biggest thing is that there will be an initial meeting with haulers, which will happen towards the end of November. And that's when elected officials and staff meet with licensed collectors in the city to lay out council priorities and desires and what council members have heard from residents. And it's just kind of, it's a meet and confirm meeting with the haulers to start the process. It's not an official negotiation meeting. Those will happen after. And so as we go throughout the winter, that entails negotiations alongside public engagement. So we are planning a lot of public engagement through various forums to really reach out to the entire Richfield community that, you know, will be serviced or could be serviced by organized collection. It's obviously not an entire city, but it's usually residential units or residential buildings with one to four units is typically who that encompasses. And so to really reach out to the community and understand, you know, their priorities, their thoughts, their concerns, their feedback, and share the information that we've learned throughout this process as well to make sure that everyone's on the same page. There's also the second bullet point that says formation of the Options Committee, which is a potential route for the organized collection process. Depending on how negotiations go, it's a committee that does further research on ways to organize collection. So that will be decided later on in the process. But it doesn't affect the regular public engagement that will be going on. So public engagement, all of these pictures are from in-person public engagement. And obviously, all of our public engagement for this effort is going to be virtual. I did want to point that out. We are planning several, what we're calling, learning and listening sessions, which will be virtual presentation, open house, Q and A kind of things for staff and residents to interact and ask each other questions and, you know, hopefully answer those questions and have that community forum. We've also created a webpage that will be actually published tonight that will host a variety of resources, including an FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions page, and a whole list of the benefits to organizing collection. And we hope that that will answer a lot of questions that residents might have. In addition to those questions being answered online, we do have, you know, staff who are available to answer those questions. I'm personally really excited to talk to residents who have thoughts that they want to share about organized collection or are unsure how a part of the process might work. And so in all of our materials, my contact information is listed. And then our regular outreach through social media posts and videos. I have already done throughout the past few years, regular recycling education and organics education and then waste reduction education. So that'll all continue. And having social media posts about the learning and listening sessions and the benefits to organizing collection and those things will kind of help round out our public engagement. And this is an area that we will keep developing over time. If we need to have more learning and listening sessions or have another suggestion from residents on what they'd like to see in public engagement, that feedback's always welcome as well. So then to continue the process, next year, again, this is very tentative. We don't know how long certain steps might take. So there's a lot of question marks. There's a lot of February slash March. You know, it's just really subject to how long various steps of the process take. So obviously, our public engagement and education will be ongoing throughout the whole process. That doesn't stop at any point throughout. And then in addition, as negotiations continue and public education and engagement continues, if a contract, a draft contract proposal is brought to city council by staff or recommended to city council by staff, then there are other steps that will be, like a public hearing will be held. And the city council will consider the draft contract and, you know, make changes or suggestions. Again, this point in the process depends on how long negotiations last. It's hard to pin down an exact, even exact month that it might happen. But depending on when contracts with the haulers could be approved and how long those licensed haulers would need to implement the contract in the city, we could be looking at a summer or fall implementation schedule, which is ideally the ideal time to implement a new kind of collection system. Obviously, you want to avoid a winter contract. So this falls in line with the goal of getting curbside organics collection by January 1st of 2022 to fulfill the Hennepin County mandate. So that is the tentative process. And I think we can now open it up for any questions or feedback from council members.
Thank you to staff for that great presentation. Any questions or comments from council members?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, I know we've had this conversation before, but I still am fully in support of the effort. I think all of the reasons given are accurate. Few clarifying things. The, I know there's like lots of engagement and education opportunities in terms of like if residents want to provide input as the process goes on. What avenues are there for that? And is, I know you mentioned the Options Committee. Could you maybe just say a bit more about that? Would that be something that some residents would be part of? Or is that more like staff, council, and haulers? I just, I know there's a few residents I've talked to who like want to be part of the process.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. So to answer the first question about feedback separate from the engagement and education aspect, I think we'll definitely be working on a variety of ways for residents to submit that feedback that's not necessarily at those learning sessions. I hope that that's having the staff availability. I hope that, you know, having my contact information out there and putting it on these posts and in our releases and things like that. And when we do, you know, any material, like sending any mailers or anything like that, I hope the more I can get my contact information out, the more that residents are sharing that information or their feedback with me. As it relates to the Options Committee, it's, if we get to that point in the process, I would say that we are, we have considered and would like to have residents on the Options Committee. The Options Committee is just, it's a little up in the air as to if a city starts it at one point in the process, they start it, you know, and the reasons why they're starting it. So if we get to that point, then yes, residents would greatly appreciate if they were involved. The members of the committee are appointed. So that would be a future conversation for sure. But again, if you have any ideas or if the residents who I've talked to have any ideas on how they would like to submit that feedback to me, I'm all ears.
City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we have talked about this a bit. And there's not a lot, there's not a roadmap for this because there haven't been that many communities that have done it. But we have a strong tradition in Richfield of making decisions with residents. And so the conversations that we have had is that we would have residents on the Options Committee and involve them early in the process. So they're learning along with us as we do the negotiations.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to staff and Amy, or Director Merkel, Rachel specifically. Quick question just about the Options Committee. And did I understand, is there just one package of benefits that every resident will get? Or services? Or will there be some kind of a menu or optionality on an individual home basis?
So to clarify, the Options Committee doesn't have anything to do with services in what you're referencing, Councilmember Chapman. So with the services you're referencing, like a resident's garbage recycling and eventually organics collection as well, that's separate. So let me tackle the services part first. It's not that every resident in the city of Richfield would be obligated to have the same garbage can size, recycling can size, you know. Optional services would still exist, like yard waste collection, bulky item pickup, things like that, that are very much, you know, if a resident wants it, they can. And if they don't, they, you know, it's not obligated. The cart size choice is still there. Other specifics that we'd get into would have to be decided through negotiations, including possibilities like having every other week trash collection for those who are producing way less with having organics collection. Or looking at pricing for having every week recycling versus every other week recycling, things like that. So there's flexibility. Some of those details just would have to be figured out through negotiations. But not every resident would be subject to have garbage, recycling, organics, yard waste, mandatory bulky items. It's not that intense. And then the Options Committee is a separate entity that focuses on other aspects of the organizing process. So it's in tandem at times with negotiations, but it focuses on alternatives if necessary.
Yeah. I kind of look at the Options Committee like another tool that we have to, for a group to get together and coalesce and think through some options they can bring towards the people doing the negotiations to look at other ways to do it.
Thank you. I'm very excited that this process is moving forward. I think it's been a long time coming, and I think it's gonna be good for the community. I had one process question. When you were talking about that initial meeting that's coming up in the next few weeks, is that with the entire council or a couple of representatives? How's that going forward? And then as far as the feedback and the community engagement, are we going to be having the Sustainability Commission or the Community Service Commission members help us reaching out to residents and helping in that process?
So for, let me, I'll go backwards. Yes, to the commission aspect with education, outreach, and engagement. We have been talking to Sustainability Commission about this and can definitely loop in other commissions as needed. But the Sustainability Commission is aware, and actually, their meeting this month will be all about learning this whole process in addition to, you know, what we've talked about in the past. And so they will be kind of the commission, the default commission, I'd say, for education and outreach with this effort. And then in reference to that initial meet and confirm meeting with the licensed collectors, that's what you're referring to, right, Councilmember? Okay. That's actually a conversation that we've had over the past few days. And details are still in progress. But we will be connecting with council members to see if the tentative date and time that staff has identified will work for all council members or a majority. But I think, yes, we will try to coordinate with as many council members as possible to really have, you know, as many at the meeting with the licensed collectors to share priorities and perspectives. And I think that would lend to a balanced discussion. So I hope I answered all of your questions.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember, and then Councilmember Chapman.
I had a question for, I know engaging with residents and figuring out what options we have can be challenging. Well, challenging normally, even more so with COVID. But knowing as several different residents are good about reminding us knowing that not everyone does have internet. Are there, I mean, have we thought about like even just like a simple postcard mailing to residents who would be impacted by this? And maybe it's even just that with some bullet points. And then, I mean, the link to the FAQ page if they have internet or your phone number to reach out. And I don't know that there is much of a more interactive option than that short of like trying to call every resident, which is not really feasible. But have we, have we thought about non-virtual engagement and education options?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Rachel and I have already started talking about a mailer or postcard, something that would go out to everyone so we make sure we reach as many people as possible. And then we just lined up a contract today too with a lady that we've worked with before to offer translation services during the engagement meeting. So we should be able to translate everything in Spanish as well.
Go ahead.
Just to slightly elaborate on what Director Merkel was saying, we figured out a way in, or a function of WebEx to provide live closed captioning. So it'll hopefully be the best of all worlds where we can have captioning and translation for those who might need or want it. And then also, when it comes to a Q and A portion of this open house, there'll be an opportunity for the translator to verbally translate any questions to me. So we're kind of hitting all of those bases on the learning sessions. Obviously, yes, they are, since everything is so virtual, unfortunately, it's dependent on internet. But the mailer will go out and we will continue to try and think of, you know, different ways to kind of reach communities that might not have reliable internet access or might not be available at the times that these sessions are happening. You know, whether that's recording the sessions and posting them online if they can access internet from another location later. The WebEx meetings are accessible via phone as well. So that could be an option. We'll just, we'll have to see and then kind of play some of this by year. But we are doing the best we can in the virtual landscape we find ourselves in. We'll just, we'll have to see and then kind of play some of this by year, but we are doing the best we can in the virtual landscape we find ourselves in.
Councilmember Chapman, did you have a comment or question?
I, I did. It was almost word for word what, uh, councilmember, Councilmember Wayland asked. So, so thanks to Councilmember Wayland, um, same, same page, same question. I think it was, it was basically answered, um, and my only, my only other just, you know, highlighting it is, was maybe just the, the folks that are probably going to have the hardest time to connect via internet are probably going to be the people that are going to be taken the most by surprise by this and might, might find it the most challenging to transition to, to a new, um, a new system for, for trash collection, specifically older folks, especially older folks that are not on the internet or people that, that may struggle with different disabilities. So I'm glad you guys are thinking about that, um, but that was, that was same, same question. Good, good question, Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman, Rachel.
I do want to add, um, thanks, Councilmember Chapman, that reminded me, uh, just as an anecdote of how we can reach out to, um, various communities, especially, those who might not have, uh, internet. I heard recently from a few, uh, residents who were trying to connect with their hauler about yard waste pickup. And a few of the residents who called me didn't have internet access, but they heard from their neighbors what was happening on, on sites like Nextdoor or, um, you know, I'm sure the, the community page or things like that. So we have these, uh, these communication channels already set up. I think it's just going to be how, how can we be intentional about reaching these communities? You know, where they're at and, and how having neighbors share this information, uh, with each other and things like that. So we do have this, uh, great organic communication in Richfield and, and hopefully we can take the, take advantage of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapel.
Um, and this is just a brainstorm suggestion. As we were talking, I thought about the high school kids because I know there are a number of kids at high school that are really into sustainability and into, um, climate action plans and that kind of stuff. And I'm hoping we can tap into some of their thoughts as well.
It's a great suggestion, Councilmember Chapel. Thank you for bringing it up. You're right, our students are so passionate about this issue of sustainability. Um, I realize I haven't added anything yet, so I just want to say I've seen the past. I think, um, this is the right direction to go in. We've been building to go in this direction, um, in several different ways, looking at organics in our city, looking at the abysmal rates of recycling that we have in Richfield and, um, really focusing on sustainability and equity. And, um, staff has done a great job of outlining why this, um, organizing really rolls up into meeting those goals and values of the council and, and as of the city overall. Just one, and I know we've talked about outreach, but I think given COVID, we might not know exactly how things will play out, period. With any, that's, you know, just being responsive as best as, as we can. And, you know, I think we've been doing a great job in being nimble as we see gaps and barriers because of COVID. And so just take, applying that same approach with this. There might be things that come up, um, that are really particular to the situation we are facing with COVID. And I know that staff has done such a great job in the past of, of filling those gaps, of being creative. But this is just another one of those areas where it's such an important thing to our whole community. And because of COVID, there's going to be additional challenges or ways that we might need to do things. So just asking everyone to kind of put their feelers out there. We're all in the community in different ways. And if we do see kind of barriers come up, um, making sure that we're being responsive and adapting as needed. Because who knows, um, what that will look like with this process? But I'm, I'm sure things will come up that we maybe haven't planned for. Any other comments or questions, Director Merkel?
Yeah, I was just going to say we could easily work with, um, Neil and probably getting information up on the community access channel. Uh, so if people don't have internet, that's another outlet. We may be even able to pre-record, um, part of our learning session and try to post that periodically throughout this, this winter, people.
Right. And other questions or comments, Councilmember Troutman and then Wayland and then, oh, and then Peter, did you raise your hand as well? Great, we'd love to hear from you. So, uh, the two councilmembers and then we'll go to Peter.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, great, great idea with regards to, um, to, to engaging our, our schools and our school, uh, system. And I was just reminded that on occasion, we, we've used, um, kids' backpacks as a method of communication to communicate to families. And, and so that could be another, uh, another, another channel, um, to, uh, to communicate with families and even over communicate this. Because people I know will experience this, you know, as a, as a difference and a change. And so I just, I want to say thank you again, and I'm really excited for this. And, um, and, uh, and that's it. Thanks, guys.
Um, I had a, just a quick question or I think as much a reminder, I think I know the answer to this. But I know when we first started this conversation, uh, more publicly, one of the first concerns we heard from residents that I think is still valid and just want to make sure that it's planned to be part of negotiations, um, is the actual like transition? And, um, especially like making sure that whoever, um, I know there's many directions that this could go based on negotiations, whether it's one hauler for the whole city or different haulers take different portions. But, um, just want to confirm that the, the actual logistics of like changing over billing, getting old bins picked up, new ones delivered, all of that, that we, um, it's our plan for that to be as, uh, seamless as possible for residents and hopefully without any, um, additional fees or things from their, their current contracted hauler.
Just in a response to Councilmember Wayland's comment, um, I agree. Thank you for bringing that up again. And it, it has been a very important thing that we've focused on throughout this whole process. You know, that's part of that whole minimize disruption to residents on that slide. It's not just, uh, safety and reducing the number of trucks, but it's really as we go throughout this process, making it as easy as possible. Um, and making sure that we can follow some best, best practices that have happened in other, uh, situations where residents weren't charged, um, for, you know, cart switching. Um, and, you know, there was overlap between when they had, when they got their new cart and then when their old service stopped so that they were never without a cart, you know, things like that. So thank you for bringing that up and we will make sure it's prioritized for sure.
Thank you. I think Peter had, um, shared some comments as well.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, uh, first of all, thank you for inviting me to participate in this workshop. As a member of the Minnesota Police Control Agency, we do appreciate being involved. And, uh, we very much value the environmental benefits that can be achieved through organized collection. So I want to let you all know that that's recognized by us. So, thank you, I guess, is kind of the first piece. Couple of things I just wanted to share as observations that I've noticed with other communities. You will have a loud vocal minority, um, that opposes this. So I just want you to be aware of that. And so I think it's great, all of the discussion that you're having around community engagement, because the more the city gets out and communicates with the residents, the better off you'll be in terms of, in terms of that loud vocal minority. Because the haulers will communicate with your community. If they haven't started that already, they may have already. And then, um, the other thing that I urge council to consider as you go forward is a dynamic that the number of haulers you have and keeping small haulers is an inverse relationship to the cost to the residents. So that's, that's a difficult thing that you're going to have to weigh and something that you're going to need to decide what your priority is. Because the lowest cost to the resident will be one hauler. But there's a lot of value in making sure that your small independent haulers remain in business as well. That's just going to increase the cost to the residents. So that's a dynamic that I like decision makers to be aware of as they proceed. So that's what I have for you today.
Thank you much for ending the meeting and for, um, bringing that up. That, that information is very valuable because you have seen so many communities go through this process. So any, um, observations or information that can help us make it a smoother process is greatly appreciated. Um, I know Rachel wanted to respond as well.
Yeah, no, more so just add on. Thank you, Mayor. I did want to, to point out that, uh, you know, we are, uh, privileged to have a, a few haulers of different sizes in Richfield. Um, and that will make the, the negotiations process of which, you know, the statute requirements obviously require a negotiation with a consortium first, as the first attempt. But the haulers that we have in Richfield and the ones that we work with, um, you know, I think this is going to be a very beneficial process, uh, to residents in both obtaining, uh, a more equitable and lower price for residents and keeping all haulers in the city. You know, that have their current market share. So really balancing both the residential price and the, and the hauler, uh, presence. And I hope that that's something that we can continue to work through, um, through negotiations to really, to maintain both as best as possible and, and keep getting those benefits for everybody. So thanks, Peter, for your additions.
Oh, Peter and Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, one more thing I wanted to mention, uh, Rachel in her presentation mentioned the acquisition of Randy's sanitation. It'll be interesting to me, just as an aside, um, how that affects your process, because Randy's has been one of the most vocal opponents to organize collection and, um, Republic Services has tended to kind of just allow it to happen. Confident in their ability to negotiate a decent deal with the community. So with Randy's being purchased, it may, it may, I want to emphasize that may, um, result in a smoother process for you, depending on who the other haulers are in the community.
Councilmember Chapman, did you have something to add? No?
I, I did. I'm, I'm sorry, the, my connection is kind of fading in and out here a little bit. Thank, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I know this is a difficult issue, kind of balancing, um, smaller haulers versus costs. And so, and I'm still learning about this, but I just wanted to share my thinking about this. And I really am more concerned about cost than making sure every smaller hauler still has the contract. It's just one of the benefits, I, I, I love small businesses, I'm passionate about small businesses, but there's an opportunity to scale and there's an opportunity to get a better, more efficient result. And so whether that's one hauler or two haulers, um, I think that's a good consideration. But I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, just one, one voice. But I, I would not make, making everything the same, the, a, a, a particular goal as far as I'm concerned. I, I don't have a strong feeling about that, but I just wanted to share that as staff has some flexibility as they're, they're negotiating.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman. I'll just add to that too. I think in my, in my role and in our role on the council, our number one interest is, is the impact on our residents, right? Short term and long term. And so I'm always, um, thinking about, uh, about that first and foremost is the impact across the whole community. Obviously, there's always, there's always, uh, you know, more direct impacts on decisions for certain groups and you take that into account. And at the end of the day, you balance that with the impact on the whole city. Because we are, you know, we're accountable to, to work with our residents to do what's best for the whole community of Richfield. Great, other, oh, Rachel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to point out, um, I, I don't know if this is, uh, as, uh, public. I work with this fact all the time. I don't know if this is super public knowledge. In the city of Richfield regarding residential haulers, we currently have five licensed. However, with, um, market share and with the acquisition of Randy's, uh, by Republic, we would essentially be negotiating after the acquisition is final with three haulers. So that does kind of bring, um, you know, the, the, bring in a new element into the mix in terms of, you know, getting prices. And, um, you know, it's, it's a very different situation than a lot of other cities have dealt with, um, in terms of the number of haulers, which can have a lot of, uh, different, um, variables. So it could make the process shorter, it could, you know, we just don't know how that will play out. But I do think it's important to note, to note that we do have a very small number of haulers that we will potentially be negotiating with and, and that is beneficial.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland.
Um, if I'm understanding the, the state mandated process correctly, at least initially, it's not, it's not an option to have a single hauler that we negotiate first with the group? Yes, okay, I'm seeing Rachel nodding. So, um, I think we'll, we'll see how negotiations go, but I think that, that question of, um, fewer or all three, uh, versus price, I think. Yeah, I mean, well, I don't think that question becomes relevant unless the negotiations with the consortium are become, we can't reach an agreement, um, is my understanding.
Rachel.
Uh, just to, to clarify on, on Councilmember Wayland's point, that he is correct. We do have to, um, enter negotiations with a consortium of licensed collectors that are, uh, available and willing to negotiate. There are a variety of clauses for why a hauler might choose to not be, to not participate. But, um, that is, uh, the first step. We will be negotiating with the licensed haulers who choose to participate in, in, um, negotiations. And, and that's where, when we look at the haulers we have in Richfield and their capabilities to provide service to the city and, uh, our interactions with them in the past and how they've, uh, negotiated in other cities and things like that. That's what, um, makes the process, um, more exciting for, for staff. Because we have seen all of these benefits to the haulers that are licensed in the city.
Other comments or questions from folks? No? Peter.
Yeah, Mayor, council members, thank you. Uh, with three haulers, the cost, um, question gets a little bit easier too. You know, a city like St. Paul had, I want to say 17 when they started their process. So obviously that made things super complex and difficult. Uh, Bloomington had seven, I think. And then, um, the other community that did it recently was Falcon Heights and they had three haulers and it went fairly smoothly. So, um, it does, it does start to simplify things when you don't have a huge number that you're working with.
Thank you. Rachel.
Last thing, I promise, thank you, Mayor. I did want to point out in, in Peter's list as well, uh, St. Anthony Village also had three haulers. Um, and it went fairly smoothly for them as well, um, and their haulers overlapped quite a bit with Richfield, so.
Great. Helpful information. Other comments or questions on the item? Nope. All right. Well, thank you so much, Peter, for joining us. Thank you to the staff for a great, um, presentation and thorough information on the issue. Um, and to council members for asking quite a bit of questions and just sharing what we've been hearing out in the community. So we look forward, this item is on our agenda for the council meeting tonight. Um, and I will adjourn our meeting and I'll see the council members and staff in under a half hour. Thank you. Have a great night.